Two o'clock and we'll call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. The first thing on our agenda today, Owen, thank you for being here today. First thing on our agenda is to receive a presentation regarding the corrective action permit application submitted by Hercules LLC in Pinova.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Johnson, represent Hercules in Pinova here locally, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and talk a little bit about this corrective action plan. I think it's really good news for the community, and the document itself is about 120 pages long, and I've gotten these guys through pushing and pulling to boil it down to about a 10-minute presentation. But it's an important part of improving the environmental conditions in this community. It's an important part for Pinova going forward to continue to be a very viable part of this community. Patty Downs is here from Pinova, and she told me today that they now have some folks working out there who are fourth-generation people working at the Pinova plant. So it's really been part of the fabric of this community for a long, long time, and we think the work that we're going to talk about today helps Pinova with its viability, and obviously Hercules is doing the work. One of the reasons we wanted to come here today is because, you know, these issues are complicated. A lot of times, things get lost in the noise and the public doesn't, you know, we acknowledge we've got to do a better job informing the public about what's going on there and how we're making the environment better, and this is part of that. We're talking to the chamber tomorrow morning, talking to the city tomorrow evening, and again, thank you for the opportunity to talk with the county today. And I would say this is largely really a good news update, and primarily because, and what they're going to talk about is there's work being done. And a lot of times in these environmental issues, you study things forever without work being done, but for this plan, you know, there's actually work being done that's going to improve conditions. There's already been a lot of work done, and so this is building upon that. So let me introduce the two guys who are really, you know, at the center of getting this plan done and put together. They're both from Geo-Cyntec, which is a very large engineering and science firm. They employ about 1,500 folks, have 80 offices around the world. And Greg Rousch is here, sitting on the second row. Greg's been with them for about 30 years, is an engineer by training, and has worked on environmental issues for his entire career. And Dwayne Graves, sitting here on the front row, again, been with Geo-Cyntec for about 30 years. He's a scientist, understands chemistry and groundwater and all these kinds of issues. So I'm going to turn it over to them to give you a very short presentation, and obviously we'll leave some time for any questions you might have. But thank you very much for allowing us to be here today.
And if you would, state your name for the record, please, sir.
My name is Greg Rousch. As Mark said, Hercules recently submitted the corrective action plan. I may refer to it as a CAP, but Hercules recently submitted a corrective action plan to EPD, and as Mark said, today we want to give a high-level overview of the key concepts of that corrective action plan, and as Mark says, it's 120 pages long, and we've tried to condense it down to get to the main points. Hercules has done a lot of work, investigation and remediation work over the years, but there's still more to do. So today, we're going to talk about how Hercules plans to address the remaining soil and groundwater contamination on-site, and then we'll get into next steps, which is the timeline for the corrective actions that we're implementing, as well as how to provide comments on the corrective action plan itself. Before we get into it, just a little bit of background there on the site. The plant's been there since, well, there's, I'm sorry, there's one facility, but there's two property owners. In 2010, Hercules sold the main production area of the plant to Pinova. It's outlined in purple there. It doesn't show up real good, but that's it, correct? Hercules retained ownership of the northern portion of the property, as well as the eastern portions of the property. While we're on this slide, just to point out a few features, the grassy area to the north of the Pinova plant is, that's it, was some former wastewater treatment ponds, and just northwest of that area, Hercules recently received certification from Wildlife Habitat Council for planting wildflowers that promote bees and other pollinators, and also they're maintaining that Loblawli pine forest just to the east of that. Next slide. So there's a lot of detail on the HerculesBrunswick.com website. I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to look at that. It's a lot of information on the history of the plant site, as well as history of investigations and corrective actions. Just to point out a few things on here, well, actually, so they've, the plant's had a long operational history. They've been there since the 1920s. They use pine stumps as their main feedstock to produce products that are used around the world. They were also critical for providing materials to the US government during World War II. But the plant's been there, as I said, a long time. It operated for 60 or 70 years prior to modern, current environmental regulations. You know, manufacturing operations were different back then, and they weren't environmentally conscious like they were today. So over time, chemicals from the manufacturing operations seeped into the soil and groundwater. There's been a lot of work done to figure out where those chemicals are, and there's been a lot of remediation work. And just to point out a few while we're on this slide, those surface water impoundments were closed in the 1980s by excavating all the sediment and soil underneath those ponds down to the groundwater surface and backfilled with clean soil. Just down gradient of that, a groundwater remediation system was installed in the mid-1990s to clean up shallow groundwater that's from the wastewater treatment ponds. That ran from 1995 to about 2009 timeframe. Then in the 2010 timeframe, that pink area in the middle there, Hercules excavated about 50,000 tons of soil and shipped it off-site. That long lenticular area to the right was the N Street ditch. It's a stormwater ditch. Hercules excavated that as well and concrete lined it. So, next slide. So Georgia EPD renewed the facility's hazardous waste permit in November of 2020. Permit's important because it sets the roadmap for future actions at the site. You know, one of those requirements are to take care of those closed surface impoundments like I mentioned before. Another requirement is to perform site-wide corrective actions. And so as a way to address that site-wide corrective actions, Hercules submitted a corrective action plan to EPD earlier this year. I guess while I'm on this slide, I would like to just point out that we did submit a corrective action plan to address these historic releases, but based on the data we have, there's no indication that there's any immediate threat to the general public from the historic contamination at the site. Next slide. So I mentioned this before, the corrective action plan is a plan to address the chemicals present in soils and groundwater from historic manufacturing operations. The corrective action plan uses scientific methods to make decisions about corrective actions, and it's being performed under the oversight or under the guidance of Georgia EPD. The corrective action plan itself describes where the contamination is. It talks about the ongoing corrective actions that are being implemented, and there are a few, and we'll talk about those later in the presentation. It talks about available tools, other available tools that Hercules might use to clean up the site. It talks about additional investigations and other actions to inform future corrective actions, and it presents an adaptive approach to the implementation of the corrective actions. I'll talk about the adaptive approach here on the next slide. So I know the graphic on the right is a bit busy, and I don't expect you guys to read it today. This graphic is right out of the corrective action plan, so if and when you guys read it, you'll at least be familiar with it. But the adaptive approach to the corrective action that we're taking out there is, we're going to implement some corrective actions now. We're talking about those later. We're going to monitor and optimize the performance of those corrective actions. While we're doing all of that, we're going to continue the investigations at the site. If we find other areas that need corrective action, we'll implement those corrective actions. So it's an iterative process. It's a little bit of a do-loop. So for a site like this, I think it makes the most sense. It's focused on results, and we're making adjustments as we go. I guess an analogy for the optimization part is, you know, maybe changing up your game plan at halftime at a football game, right? It's that kind of concept. Things aren't working right in the first half, you mix it up at halftime, you come out and win the second half, right? So that's what we're doing. We want to implement something, monitor it, optimize it, and keep going. Does everybody kind of understand that concept of where we're headed with? Okay. I'll move into soils, and then I'll pass it off to Dwayne to do groundwater. There's two different sets of corrective actions we're implementing for soils. One addresses site-wide soils, and one addresses soils in the former toxophene tank farm. So this is another plant site view. So over 4,000 soil samples have been collected and shipped off to the laboratory for analysis. So each one of those dots on that figure represent a historic soil sample location. So out of those, so I mentioned before, you know, there's been a lot of soil remediation work done on-site. I mentioned the 50,000 tons that they excavated and shipped off-site. There has been other corrective action, but that was a big one, so I pointed that out. But based on that previous remediation, the corrective action plan, we're kind of down to these final 34 locations that Hercules intends to do something about, and it's described in the corrective action plan. That blue area, most of those, as you can see, are kind of located in the main manufacturing area, and then there's a few scattered out in outer areas of the facility. That blue area in the middle is the former toxophene tank farm, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. So this is a blow-up of the toxophene tank farm, or the former toxophene tank farm. It contains the highest concentrations of toxophene on-site, and the remedy selected for this area was called in-situ solidification. It's a process where they mix cement in with the soil with a backhoe or other equipment, and it forms this solidified mass similar to like a concrete or a driveway. It's not quite that hard, but it's similar to that, so you just end up with this big concrete monolith. So this provides usable So this provides usable, buildable space for Pineova in the future. And it binds up the contaminants so that they don't move anywhere, and they don't present any potential risk. The blue area to the south there, we are going to excavate that area as well and consolidate it into the toxophene tank farm for the ISS treatment. So it's a, it's a good technology. It's been used widely in Georgia. Geosyntec's implemented it. We're probably involved in 10 or 12 of these now. And it's a remedy that was approved by EPD last fall. A contractor has been selected for this work, and we plan to mobilize in mid-April to start construction. So with this, I'm going to, you want me to do this slide? Before we get into the groundwater remediation, just a little bit of a backgrunder on groundwater. And you guys are probably familiar with this. But, you know, underneath the plant site in the Brunswick area, there's, there's three aquifer systems. There's the upper superficial aquifer, the Brunswick aquifer, and the Floridian aquifer. The upper superficial aquifer is actually divided, I'm sorry. The superficial aquifer is actually divided into an upper superficial aquifer and a lower superficial aquifer. So the contamination that we're talking about is in the upper superficial aquifer, and it's about 100 feet thick. That upper superficial aquifer is divided into three zones, a shallow, an intermediate, and a deep. So you can kind of see the blow-up there. So that's where most of the contamination is. In the middle of the plant site, groundwater predominantly flows downward. And then from the shallow zone to the deep zone, and then it migrates laterally. So most of the contamination footprint is in that deep zone of the upper superficial aquifer, in that 70 to 90-foot depth range. So with that little bit of backgrunder, I will pass it off to Dwayne and let him continue on.
And state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Dwayne Graves, Geosyntec, as well. And, oh, yeah, go ahead. So for groundwater, the approach we took was to look at technologies that are likely to be effective. We've done a number of laboratory studies to come up with appropriate engineering design components that we need to build into the actual field application. And based on those, we have found technologies that we'll be implementing for the, for the groundwater. Next slide. So in the, for shallow groundwater, in the area there with the blue circles, we plan to use in-situ chemical oxidation. This is a widely-used technology. It's very aggressive, works well where you have shallow groundwater. You can get good contact. It tends to be a pretty quick technology. And we're using a chemical called per sulfate, sodium per sulfate. It will react with those chemicals. We've demonstrated that in the lab. Now it's just a matter of getting that into the, into the aquifer, the shallow water, to treat, treat the chemicals there. In the deep water, it gets a little more complicated simply because we're 100 feet deep. And that makes getting amendments into the deep water more challenging. We have looked at technologies that are appropriate for this and have selected bioremediation, which uses bacteria to biodegrade or to eat the contamination. We're planning to do this in a, in a way that forms a permeable reactive barrier. And we'll be injecting amendments that will stimulate the microorganisms to eat the food that's present as contamination, as the contaminating chemicals, primarily benzene, chloro benzene, and chloroform in these areas. Conceptually, this is what the, the system will look like. You have groundwater moving. The green wall there is actually a permeable reactive barrier, by proper terminology. We'll be adding amendments to the subsurface. Water will pass through that, but that will be a very biologically active area. And as the water and contamination passes through, the contaminants are biodegraded, and treated water moves out the backside. Doesn't interfere with the movement of water. We don't change the permeability of the aquifer. But we do establish a very active microbial community there to degrade the contamination. We're going to do two different types. Roll back there. One is going to, because, just because of the nature of the chemicals, one will be aerobic or with oxygen. We'll set up in another area that has primarily chloroform contamination, and we'll do anaerobic treatment or no oxygen. And that's just because of the metabolism required by the microorganisms to attack those chemicals. Next slide. So in the northern area, this is roughly what's, what we're up to. The street there, the road there, is Highway 17. And the orange circles there represent the approximate area where the first implementation is going in. In fact, we're drilling this week to do a pilot test. And pilot test is important because we need to understand at 90 feet deep, when we put air into the ground to provide oxygen for these bacteria, how wide is the zone of treatment? So that we can engineer and properly space the rest of the well. So we're doing that pilot test right now, and that will lead to the implementation of the full, full design in short order. Similarly, as we move to the southern area, we'll be on the other side of Highway 17 in this case. But very similar concept. This will actually be an oxygen-free application because chloroform is a primary chemical there, and it just degrades without oxygen. That's what the microorganisms need. Next slide. I think with that, Greg, we'll wrap it up with a discussion of the timeline and where we are.
Gary, will you go back one slide there? Just a second. All right, so the well's on the left side of the road there. Is that on the east side?
That's on the west side.
On the west side?
Right. In the other case, we'll be on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
So we've got just a couple more slides here. This is Greg Rousch again. The corrective actions that we talked about will all be implemented this year. We hope to get them all installed and completed, but we're going to, we're going to get them started this year, and most of them will be completed. Corrective action performance monitoring for those will be performed next year, as well as the additional investigations and corrective actions, or additional investigations to figure out where to do other corrective actions. And then in 2023, we would envision implementing these additional corrective actions kind of based on the results, performance monitoring results of the corrective actions we implemented and the additional investigations that we perform. So that's kind of the rough timeline. Next slide. The corrective action plan went out for public comment. On February 8th, public comment period ends May 10th. There will be a virtual public meeting on March 31st at 6 o'clock. And then following this public comment period, the corrective action plan will be revised. And then EPD will put the plan out for public comment a second time prior to incorporating that corrective action plan into the permit. So if you have any questions or comments, you can submit those to EPD, to Jim Slawinski at that email address. It's also in the public information that we provide, sent out, mailed out as well. And it's also on that website, the HerculesBrunswick.com website as well. So we thank you for your time. Do you guys have any questions?
Commissioner Steve, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Mark, I'm going to address this to you because I think you may be one that can probably pull this together. Well, I certainly appreciate the flowers and the Loblawli pines, and I'm certainly not minimizing the remediation efforts and the, and the very sophisticated science known of which I understand. In 2018, this community issued a very comprehensive unified statement. It was not a statement from the Board of Commissioners or the city, but rather, it was a, it was a community statement. Came from the Chamber of Commerce, the EDA, the CVP, Board of Health, from Congressman Carter, from our state delegation. And we, we asked for some things, and we're summarily ignored. And I don't think anybody can refute that. And specifically, I'm talking about the Outfall Ditch. I'm talking about Dupree Creek. I'm talking about the spoil area on the other side of Dupree Creek. I'm talking about property on the northwest side of 17, and a plethora of other issues that, Mr. Chairman, I would request that we have, Mark, that you coordinate an effort to bring back the Geosyntec folks who've done a great job today, and I appreciate what you've talked about. But the folks from the EPD and the EPA to talk to us as well. I think this community wants to know a global answer. We've been talking, anybody that was first initiated to this process, they're all dead because we've been talking about it for that long. And, and it's time for some resolution. And if Hercules is not willing to do this, then I guess we need to know about it. We've had a very sizable investment to just be built, go in on that side of the road on a brownfield site. And the property contiguous with it would, would not be, could not be developed like that because it's not a brownfield site, is my understanding. And that's the property contiguous with the Outfall Ditch to the north. Am I correct?
There's a lot there, and I've...
I'm just talking about the property next to the stripings.
The property where the Outfall Ditch is located, I mean, that, you know, without belaboring it, I mean, that's part of the reason we're doing that work is, it can be redeveloped and actually, you know, without talking about real estate deals. I mean, there are active discussions. Let me also, before I forget, mention, Tim Hassett is also, who's with Hercules. He couldn't be here because of the travel restriction, but he's participating virtually. But we would welcome an opportunity to come back and talk more about the Terry Creek site itself, whenever the commission would, would want that.
Well, I would like to get that conversation started sooner rather than later. And I mean, I don't think there's anybody that would contend that the property there, it doesn't have a diminished value because we buried the contaminants under the ground and put some kind of cover over them. And I doubt that there's anybody that's going to build a structure on top of that, let alone, God forbid, a financing institution that financed it. So I think we've, we've got some issues here that need to be addressed. And, and this is part of it, I get it. But there are much bigger issues than this.
Now, I understand the concerns, and that's, that's part of the reason we wanted to do this is, you know, for whatever reason, the messages on the Terry Creek site, you know, and I'll accept my own share of the responsibility. We did not do a good enough job of getting out to the community, to the public, to, to share the information. So we're, you know, with this project and going forward, we're trying to get out as much as possible, as reasonably possible. And it's a little hamstrung with COVID and stuff like that. But to, to bring this, this information to the public. So, you know, I hope going forward, it'll be a far more open discourse. And we would, again, welcome the opportunity to come back and talk more specifically about Terry Creek and that site.
Well...
I mean, that's a great question. And I certainly understand your, your question, your frustration.
Well, obviously, you did a good job. When I presented, the first time, I didn't because we were ignored. And so we're, we're back for the second bite of the apple here.
Well, we, we hope so. I mean, that's, we really want to be transparent, and want the public to know what's going on, want members of this county commission to know what's going on.
This county has more superfund sites than any county in the United States of America. And, and we don't need any more poison left on our soil here to inhibit development and, and the safety of our community.
And I hope you see today that we've got real scientists and engineers working on these issues.
Way, way over my head, but I'm just saying.
But thank you for that question.
Mark, my, my concern is, and I grew up in this area.
Yes, sir.
So it's very personal to me, this whole process. It's getting this information and helping the folk who still live over there to understand what you're talking about today. And, you know, I'm trying to grasp the presentation. I know you said it's, you know, pretty lengthy, the, the whole report. So I can ask some intelligent questions now. That's separate from the issues that Commissioner Brunson brought up about Terry Creek itself. So I want to just kind of concentrate first on what the presentation today is about. Because I totally agree with everything he just said and support that. But to not confuse, especially the African-American community that is there, it's a lot of folk outside of our community that understand or know what's going on better than the people who live within walking distance. And, and I've been working with the city to try to change that. And I guess my question is about the tanks, the toxophene tanks area. There was a comment that there's a, they just received some kind of approval for you to do, I don't know, something there that's, maybe it sounds like you're going to be allowed to grow something there?
I think they were talking about an ISS remedy. Is that what you're referring to? I'm not, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that the presentation, I know you all were trying to do it in 10 minutes, but that's, that's not it. You know, I couldn't follow it that fast. But, so just tell me about the tanks again. What, is there something else that's going there where the tanks are or where, where they were? Or...
Yeah, I'll let, turn that back over to Greg.
So we're not growing any, well, what we plan to do in that area is get big batch plants in there and mix the soil with cement. And it will become just kind of a solidified concrete mass, right? You know, like a sidewalk or something, but bigger, thicker and bigger. And we will put just a vegetative soil cover over it, but, but it has no function other than just protecting the, the solidified mass. What I did say, it will provide, you know, a buildable, usable space for Pineova if they want to build something on that property, on that piece of the property. I think the growing part might have been the bacteria that Dwayne was talking about in the groundwater.
Okay, it sounded like that there was some kind of conservative conservation permit or something.
I thought they were talking about the flowers.
Oh, yeah. That was the Wildlife Habitat Council on that northwest corner, next to the Loblawli Forest. Hercules planted a bunch of wildflowers and got a certification from the Wildlife Habitat Council. So the wildflowers will promote bees and other pollinators to just, it's, it's just something to give back to the environment.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a, an organization that has certain requirements. You have to meet certain requirements, and you submit information. And then, you know, they provide a certification that you've met all the requirements.
How large is that area?
Sorry?
How large is that area?
Tim, you're on the phone. I haven't been involved in that one directly. It's kind of that triangular area.
I would say it's about two acres.
It's about two acres.
Okay, all right.
Let me ask you this. In choosing to use the, mixing the concrete with the soil there, why did you choose that versus just taking it out and removing it and then replacing it?
So a couple of things. Safety was number one, right? So we're going down to five or six feet with the cement. When you dig something up, there's, one, we would be in the groundwater, so we got to deal with all that groundwater and then discharge it. It creates fugit emissions, you know, dust particles when you dig it up. You got to load it into trucks or driving down the highway. So as, I mean, an in-situ remedy just made more sense. It's also next to the Vensol Warehouse. So if you dig that deep, you've got structural issues with the Vensol Warehouse. It's the white building on the right. So we just thought it's, it's a, it's a greener, safer technology to treat things in the ground rather than digging them up and creating another waste stream that's got to go somewhere else, traveling across all the highways. And, and again, like I said, from just a worker safety standpoint, it makes more sense, too.
And so, now that, that would be...
Let me, this is a common technology that's been, you know, implemented in the state of Georgia pretty widely. I know Atlanta Gaslight's done it in Augusta. They've done it in Macon. They've done it in Columbus. So it's not, it's not a, you know, a unique or innovative technology. It's been out there for a while. It's been out there for a while, and it's pretty commonly done.
So you're saying that removing contaminated soil, there's no safe way to do that at all?
I'm not exactly, I'm not saying that.
And the reason I say that is because, then you just said that this is something that's common.
Yep.
For my understanding, removing contaminated soil is also common, and it should be, there should be safe ways. I understand that there's risk.
Right.
Heck, the whole thing is risky.
Right.
But to say that, you know, this was less risky than removing it, which the community wants it gone, and then staying there. And to me, it seems like that would have been, there should be a way to do that because I know it's done all the time.
Right.
Or unless you're telling me something different today.
No, I mean, excavation is, is performed commonly as well, right? Every situation is a little bit different, and I think just because we were excavating the depth of the excavation, getting into groundwater, just the whole process was more complicated than treating the soil in situ, making a solidified mass out of it. It's not going to move anywhere, it's not going to present any risk to anybody, and it provides a buildable space for Pinova to put a building on.
Residual levels, right? Yeah, well, being able to, for them to build on, I think there's a number of ways to deal with that, but, okay, I...
I'll add, not that I'm an engineer, but just on other things I've worked on, just when you're, like Hercules here did, in fact, when you're dealing with the more, the more mass numbers, you know, they removed 50,000 tons already. Here, what you're really dealing with is residual levels. And a lot of times in those situations, it's the in-situ stabilization that is more commonly used. Because, you know, the dirt and shovel, I mean, it's a blunt instrument. I mean, this, you can actually be really precise and make sure, you know, based on the sampling, that you stabilize, and again, it's just, we're talking about very, very low levels, not, not the kind of levels that we were talking about when we removed that 50,000 tons earlier.
So, so removal was used in another part?
Right, right.
Okay, all right. Well, then I certainly, I certainly want to look at that a little bit more myself, that The hazardous permit that I guess was just approved?
In November.
In November. What does that mean exactly?
Uh, it's a hazardous waste permit. It allows the plant to store hazardous waste for less than 90 days, has to be off-site 90 days in a designated storage area. And then it, as I said, it has requirements to take care of those closed wastewater surface impoundments, and then it has requirements to do site-wide corrective action, which is what the corrective action plan itself is trying to address that issue that's in the permit.
So this is toxaphene hazardous stuff? Or what is the, what would be the hazardous waste?
Uh, the hazardous waste that's generated now is stuff that the plant, it's also Pinova's permit as well, right? And so they generate some small quantities of hazardous waste during their manufacturing operations. I'm not exactly sure what they are, but I know they generate some. And then, some of our investigation-derived waste sometimes is a hazardous waste. So, you know, a drum of this and a bucket of that kind of thing. So it's smaller quantities, that's the hazardous waste. Not, there's, you know, not a lot of toxaphene hazardous waste left out there.
Okay. That is a concern. And then you said, you talked about where the contamination is. You all have identified pretty much everywhere. You're pretty sure about where all the contamination is.
Yeah, you saw the figure. I mean, you know, there's 4,000 sample locations, so we have a pretty good handle on where it is. Now, where, what we plan to do is, you know, we just need to refine the edges. I talked about these 34 locations, and so we know it's there, right? A constituent that needs to be dealt with is there, but we don't know where it stops within the sample grid. So we're going to do some additional investigations to just bound that area in so that we know what we're addressing.
And Commissioners, if I could, Commissioner Brunson just asked that we have a special work session to go through this in more detail. Would you be amenable to pulling, calling that special work session? And Mr. Hours, do you think we could do that in a two-week period or a four-week period? Mr. Johnson, perhaps would you be ready to make a presentation in?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd say we do have the public meeting coming up on March 31st. I would think anytime after that would be a good time. And if y'all know of any other groups or that you think would be interested, please let us know, because again, I'm sincere in my statement that we want to get out and let folks know about this work. And these questions are great, so, but absolutely, we'd be welcome opportunity to do that.
And Mr. Hours, would you schedule that, coordinate with Mr. Johnson, and let's have this within a 30-day period on a work session that's designated for this and this alone? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the virtual session, how can the public tune into that? I didn't see any information. Where will that be held? How do you, how do you tune into that so we can get the information out?
Um, we did take out a notice.
We did take out a notice, and it's posted on that HerculesBrunswick.com website as well.
So the link, the link to see the presentation will be on that website?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And one question for me. When I was on the commission here back in 2000, this process of cleaning up that plant just began. I know you've made great progress, but it's hard to believe that 20, 21 years later, we're still dealing on this issue. I had a call from a few people, and of course, I was planning to come by and meet with y'all, so I appreciate you coming in and giving us the update so I could hear. I have people reported to me that the contamination water has exceeded the boundaries, if you go back to the overall map, property map. There's been, you know, movement of that contaminated water on the east side of 17, up and down some of the properties to the north and the south. Do you have any comment on that given to me?
I really, really probably shouldn't comment on that. I mean, it's a matter that's in litigation, so I don't think it'd be proper for me. I mean, generally, we can certainly talk about groundwater in general terms, and on Hercules's property, I don't want to comment on off-site property owners.
Have there been any wells put in on the east side of 17?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And how many wells, where are those at?
No, the number?
Uh...
It's numerous.
I mean, there's probably 10 wells on the east side of 17.
On any of those on private property?
Yes. Three, at least three of them are that Hercules installed.
And do you have results from those wells?
Yes, sir.
That are available to the public?
I believe they're available to the public. The EPD would have all that information.
Okay.
And they're included, the results are included in the corrective action plan as well.
Well...
That corrective action plan is posted on that website also.
Okay. Well, just, I agree with Mr. Brunson's statement here that to come back up here and find that the issues that were addressed a while back or asked for weren't, is really disturbing to hear as I get re-informed on this and the rumors or statements made to me. And I realize that statements made may or may not hold water, but there seems to be evidence of concern on the properties, and obviously, there's some litigation going on that I'm not aware of, but I agree with Mr. Chairman. We want to see more and hear more, and we're going to need to reconnect for, in behalf of the community, see what's going on and what can be done. Too long it's gone on.
It's a long process, it sure is.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, we thank you very much for coming in today. And Mr. Hours, could we?
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
I know we're going to do this. What are the expected impacts of the byproducts of the bioremediation?
Yeah, based on our credibility study work in the lab, we expect the byproducts to be carbon dioxide and water. So, really...
So there's no expectation of the waste that's left behind?
Uh, no. On the northern side, we've got benzene and chlorobenzene. Those both should biodegrade to carbon dioxide and water and a little bit of salt with chlorine. On the south side is chloroform. It will go through an intermediate step of methylene chloride or dichloromethane, but then that also gets degraded, and we've been able to demonstrate that it completely degrades as well to carbon dioxide and water and a little salt.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Hours, would you also invite the EPD to be here at that meeting, please? All right. Thank you again. Item number two is to receive a presentation regarding the Mallory Park Improvement Plan from the St. Simon's Athletic Association. I see Ms. Gorganas coming up, so...
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. Lisa Gorganas, Director of Recreation and Parks for Glen County Recreation and Parks. Several months ago, well, two months ago, back in January, we assembled the folks from the St. Simon's Athletic Association to get together with them to talk about a plan that they had been working on several years ago to see if, gauge their interest in still working on a plan to make some improvements at Mallory Park. Those gentlemen were very interested in talking with us and have some, have some great ideas, and we thought we'd bring them before you today to present the plan that they would like to see implemented at Mallory Park, something that they've worked on for a while. And so what we're doing today is going to let them make their presentation of the plan and then seek your direction and your comments on possibly trying to move forward with the concept planned, if this is something that you would like to see happen at Mallory Park. And as we consider this, you know, if this is something that the board would be interested in doing, we could work with their team, with Aaron Mumford and our county attorneys, Public Works and our county team to come up with, you know, a final plan and possibly a memo of understanding, working with them on this project. But they really have the meat and potatoes of this, so I'm going to introduce them to come on up and make the presentation to you today. So, we have Yates Anderson, Mr. Jimmy Johnston, and then Ben Hartman. So those gentlemen are here to make their presentation today.
Good afternoon, Yates Anderson. Thank y'all for the time today. If you don't mind, could you go to slide forward? I think it's going to show up best on the screen for us. There's a couple other there that show arrow overlay, existing conditions, but I think the purpose of this, this will show up the best. So yes, Jimmy Johnston, Ben Hartman, and I, well, some others have been looking at this for a few years now, but there's been some renewed interest in it. Recently, some private donors have come to us that have spread some interest in moving forward. And what it lays out is we love this park, Mallory Park, and it's a very special place, but we do see needs for some improvements. It started out looking mainly at the field drainage and site drainage that we thought we could improve, but as we got into it more and more, we also wanted to look at maybe improved parking, better training facility for the fields, and just making it come truly what it could be as a special place, as I said. In this plan, all live oaks are preserved, because you know, that's a big part of what makes Mallory Park special. We also plan to improve drainage, as I said, try to keep all drainage retention within the site is our goal. Currently, on the north side of the property, there is a large retention area. Our intent would be to go to underdownt retention, contain all the water on-site, which would help with the surrounding areas, because we've heard there's some concerns there. I think that would be a big plus for the space. As I mentioned, training, we have looked at a, in the center of the, between the field on the south end and the middle field, you see the large rectangle in the middle there, that's a new pavilion-covered batting cage area. We also have some areas for wall ball, some other training, as well as bullpens have been added to the design as well. We will be converting, we have three fields now of various sizes ranging from 150-foot long all the way up to 270. In talking with the recs department and other folks, the optimal field layout would actually be 200-foot fields for the age group that we're working with. And so this plan shows actually three 200-foot fields on-site. Some other points to mention, we would look at enlarging the playground area. We would improve parking, as I mentioned, that's been a big concern of that site. In meeting with some of you individually, we even talked about the potential of the right-of-way that exists on the northern end. That right now, actually to the right of the screen there, there's a right-of-way that's unpaved, mainly a few pine trees exist there today, but we could add up to 70 spaces there if allowed. That also could serve as, and talk about, you know, a staging zone for buses in the village is a need, that could work for that as well. But we're excited about this, it's a potential, but really, before we went much further with our planning and talking with private donors, we wanted to make sure y'all were aware, comfortable with the plan that we have in place, and get your feedback. Any questions I could answer, or one of us could answer?
A few things, Walter, do you want to go ahead?
I saw the presentation up close and personal. The parking on the end is really a plus, but, you know, you're going to take that park that needs upgrade and upgraded. I think it's a good idea.
Great, thank you. Yeah, we could be upwards of almost 200 parking spaces on this plan as it exists today.
And we know how bad the village needs parking.
Correct, for sure.
Yeah, very excited to see this plan, and want to thank you for those people that are helping fund this renovation. You always hear me talk about my childhood. I grew up there at Mallory Park, and this is the first major renovation that has had, I won't say how old I am now, but for the orientation, since it's more, looking here at the picture, Mallory Street is on which side of this picture?
The bottom of the page is Mallory.
Okay.
We included there a crosswalk to the park across. We've been maybe proposing, this is somebody we've worked with Public Works, we've got a civil engineer already on board donating his time as well, but maybe that could even consider like a speed plateau that would slow people down along Mallory. We also made the parking along Mallory five foot deeper to make it easier to back out into that street. We see that as a need, as we've seen how it's being used today versus what it could be.
And the parking that you have on the plan there to the right, that's up at the north end that we're talking about?
That's current...
On that ditch in the church and...
Yes, sir, that's currently the retain, the drainage retention area that's open.
Right.
And holds water pretty continuously, and several pine trees, but no large live oaks or anything like that of that sort that run that area. I believe Joint Water and Sewer has an easement through that now. That could remain, but it'd just be getting permission from y'all to work through that and have that opened up as additional parking.
Right, I've had Dave contact Joint Water Sewer to talk about that. You got any updates on that conversation, Dave? Okay.
But as I mentioned, the easement would remain. That doesn't concern us. That happens all the time under roads, we'd just be able to use on top of it.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. We need more parking close to the pier, and that's great. Thanks.
Are all these parking spaces paved on this, or these are just gravel, or?
We're hoping for paved. Roberts Engineering is working with us, so we, if given permission to move forward, we would start getting to those areas of study of how we would handle collection of water, movement of water, soil, you know, what they can absorb, and we would get into that. So there might be a mix of that, but hopefully, for maintenance purposes and for movement of water, we'd hope for predominantly be asphalt. But that would be in later studies that we could bring to y'all.
And on the underground storage of stormwater?
Yes, sir.
Do you plan to reuse that water through irrigation purposes?
We're looking at that, yes, sir. We have talked with a private, with SAP well drilling area on, they were going to help us with a new well for the site, or new pumps, but we're also looking at having that as usable water as well. Yes, sir. That'd be predominantly located in the upper-right corner of the drawing there under that area, which will also serve as pre-game warm-up. We need kind of safety areas where kids can get ready for games, that kind of thing, so it'd have a dual use.
And what do you need from the commission to move forward?
I'll let Ben speak to that, just to make sure.
Hey, Ben Hartman.
Hey, Ben Hartman. I think we'd just like to make sure that moving in this direction worked for all of you. And what we're talking about trying to do is to raise the money privately and then build the facilities privately and then turn it back over to you in time for baseball next year. And so I guess number one would be that you are okay with us conceptually. And number two, to authorize Mr. Mumford and I to see if we can't work out how to allow this to happen with private dollars and to allow Yates and his folks to build the facility for you and then hand it back over to you. So if you could authorize Aaron, Mr. Mumford, to work with me on coming up with a way to make that happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm for all of the above.
Do we have a consensus to move forward? And Mr. Mumford, do we need to put this on a consent agenda for Thursday night to make a formal recommendation?
I don't think so, unless there's an objection from a Commissioner. I'm clear on what I need to do.
I think we're excited about this, so I think we have a consensus to move forward. And thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your interest in Mallory Park and the village and all of Glen County. Thank you, thank you for those efforts.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
And Commissioners, once we have a document that memorializes what we're talking about, we'll bring that to the Board to approve.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Item number three of this afternoon is to receive a presentation regarding the expanding beach lifeguards to Gould Inlet. And Ms. Gorganis, you're up again.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for that, that's tremendous. Recreation and Parks, as you most know, most of you know, oversees the beach operations, the seasonal lifeguards that operate at East Beach. We currently have a seasonal staff person, positions of 17. That includes two senior lifeguards and then 15 lifeguards. In addition to that, those lifeguards are managed by the Recreation Program Manager over the Beach Operations Division, as well as a Recreation Specialist. Those two full-time employees also work in athletics during the remaining part of the year, during the school year. So we're coming to you today to seek direction and input from you on the possibility of adding a team of guards to guard at Gould's Inlet during the peak season of the summer, which is basically Memorial Day through Labor Day, through, really through mid-August, and then again on Labor Day. Over the past two years, we've taken steps to move forward with our Beach Safe Program by getting the Program Manager position in place, doing, getting some upgraded equipment, you know, making sure that our focus was on beach education and safety and developing partnerships and that sort of thing. And it took a little bit of a, we kind of got sidestepped a little bit last year in the summer with COVID, but we've back, we're back on track with that now. And so we're just continuing to take steps as we can to implement that Beach Safe Program that we first presented to you several years ago. In the recent, several months, I would say, there's been a number of concerns that have been brought forward about the number of incidents of things that have happened at Gould's Inlet. And there's been conversations that have, that I've been privy to and just comments here and there about possibility of putting a guard team actually at Gould's Inlet. Several of you are new to the Board from when we made the Beach Safe Presentation a couple of years ago, but that presentation was for a completely comprehensive beach safety program that would put guards basically from Massengill Park all the way down to Gould's Inlet. Well, looking at that further and taking a step back, the reality is Massengill to Coast Guard is the primary area. But again, there's been some things that have happened at Gould's, not the area in between Coast Guard and Gould's, but some things at Gould's where the lifeguards have responded to calls for assistance. The fire department personnel have been called down there. And so again, it just kind of prompts those conversations about, is a guard team warranted at Gould's Inlet during peak season? And so that's what we're coming to you today to just seek your comments on that and your thoughts on that, and get some consensus on how we move forward. During the budget process, the most recent budget process, I did submit a request for funding for consideration that's yet to be determined for a guard team at Gould's Inlet. That would include four additional seasonal positions, a senior lifeguard and three lifeguards. The addition of those four people would bring our total seasonal number to 21. And with the 21 seasonal staff plus the two full-time staff, that would allow us enough resources to be able to put the guard teams that we normally have in the Coast Guard Massengill area, as well as staff a guard team at Gould's Inlet. The thing with the request for the fiscal year '22 budget is that this would actually fund the first half of summer of 2022. It would not fund summer 2021, because if those funds were approved, those positions and the equipment needs were approved, we could not get a team ready to go July 1, July 15 to guard for the rest of the summer. So the request that I put in, the budget request, is actually for half of a fiscal year, not for the full fiscal year. So again, another idea, if there's interest in moving forward with the guard team at Gould's for this coming summer that we're in right now, is that we would need additional funding to bring those four guards on and hire them in the immediate future, as well as purchase the equipment that would be needed to put a guard team at Gould's. And when I say a guard team, a guard team would basically be a team of three. It would be a senior lifeguard and two lifeguards that would be deployed. So you would have two lifeguard stands at Gould's and a senior lifeguard who would be there, and they would all assist each other. And then again, there would be equipment needs, a side-by-side, AED radios and things like that that they would need to be stationed at Gould's for an eight-hour period during the day, seven days a week. So if by chance there's interest in moving forward with that for this summer, you know, looking at funding sources for that, and then from there, continuing that into the second half of summer 2021, from July through the end of this summer, and into the next summer for summer of 2022, the additional budget request could be around $50,000. And again, that's contingent upon the ability to buy the equipment that we would need now for this upcoming summer, and not waiting until the next budget year to buy that. So it's just some things that I've been hearing and have had the conversations with, you know, county leaders and Ms. Downs and Mr. Hours and stuff, just that the possibility of, is this something that the Commission wants to see? Are they satisfied with what's going on right now? Because I, you know, in all honesty, I think the fire department and the beach lifeguards and the Sea Island Foundation as well, all those folks have done a really good job of responding to situations that have occurred at Gould's. But it is, it is an area of concern that I know people have expressed of, when people swim and they kayak and things happen down there. So if this is the direction that the Board might want to move in, we just wanted to bring this forward for you today to consider and know what impact it would have, you know, financially on the budget if those steps were recommended and taken. So, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about.
Commissioners?
Lisa, this, you know, something you and I have talked about for a while. And one of the things that when we were looking at this previously was trying to make sure we had accurate data to review. And I think that's been sort of hard to come by. My first encouragement would be to work closely with the fire department this coming year, and let's try to nail down what exactly, who's called out when and where, and what the response is, so we'll have a little better information. Now, the information you sent me back in the fall looked like over the last five years, we felt a third of all water rescues happened at Gould's Inlet. Are you still comfortable with that figure?
I would say that's probably accurate, yes, sir.
So, so we've got an area that requires a significant amount of water rescues that we have no one overlooking and seeing what's going on. And I know for me, that's a big concern, as we all know Gould's Inlet is a little bit unlike, maybe in front of the Coast Guard Station or some of these other areas, because of the funnel action that comes with the water coming in and out. And it is, in my opinion, very dangerous. My hope would be that if we can find the money to do this, we would certainly do it. But I think it's something that's needed, so I appreciate you bringing it to the Board.
Any other comment on that this afternoon?
Couple items. Lisa, you've got the Kubota RTV in there, the two-seater in that budget. Why are we needing that in that location? Do we have one on the beach down the other way?
We have one on the other way that's used on the, at the other end. So this would be one that would transport that team to Gould's Inlet, and they would keep that with them throughout the course of the day.
And why would they need that?
Well, there's no restrooms at Gould's Inlet, so there would be having to shuttle back to the other area of the beach whenever there's a need for something like that, or just to respond to emergencies on the beach, transport.
When they report work, where do they check in?
Everybody reports to the Coast Guard Station.
Okay, so they drive in and park and go to work there?
Yes, sir. And then there's a team at Massengill and Coast Guard that has, that has a side-by-side. This would not be one, it wouldn't be as big as that one, it wouldn't be, wouldn't need to be that big. So that's why it's a little lower price than one we purchased recently. But that team would take it down to Gould's Inlet with all the equipment that they need, rescue tubes, you know, kayak, the things that they would need down there, water cooler, you know, those sorts of things they would need, first aid supplies.
Okay, I'm not sure about the need for that, but that's just, we'll work through it. And the 800 megahertz radios?
We have, we currently have one 800 megahertz radio on the beach. The other lifeguards use VHF. And what we find is with the curvature of the St. Simon's Beach, as you move down towards Gould's, the 800 megahertz radios is the best for communication directly with the public safety personnel. And they're rather expensive when you buy those, because you have to have them programmed to tune into the Glen County Public Safety channels.
So I handle VHF radios all the time, and they should be able to talk?
Our VHF don't talk to the police department right now. Whenever there's an incident, like say at Coast One or Coast Four, Mass One, they radio on the VHF to the senior lifeguard on duty or the full-time staff person. That person gets on the 800 megahertz and communicates with 911 or fire, police, whoever they need to. So the VHS that we have now don't communicate. So maybe there's something better, maybe there's a different version that we could buy that would be less expensive, but still get the job done. But that, the VHF we have don't talk to the public safety personnel.
And then one of the things I talked about that I don't see on the list here was the FLOR binoculars or FLOR equipment, that's the image thermessen.
Yes, sir, this was put together before we had that discussion, but yes, sir, that might be something that could be added.
That's common technology now, it's able to allow any individual, for example, on the beach, no matter whether it's day or night, because we have had incidents at night out there, to be able to thermo-image a person in the water and be able to see them bobbing up and down the waves that we have there. So I had asked y'all to look at what would be appropriate for that location and that use, but we definitely should have that equipment in it.
And just to point out too, the guard team would work the same hours and days as the Coast Guard, Massengill Guard Team, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So there are some incidents that happen at Gould's Inlet that are 8:00, 9:00 p.m. incidents that we, that our, this team would not respond to. It would, at that point, be the fire department's water rescue team.
Well, I think that goes back to Mr. O'Quinn, Chairman, Commissioner O'Quinn's requests is we need to make a close look at the incident reports, statistics, so we do see when things are happening there. And we may not need an early shift down there, so to speak, if the incidents are later, people coming down there. Okay, thanks.
And on the jet ski, how is that deployed? If we have one down there, how do you get it in the water? Is the side-by-side used to do that?
You would put that in there, yes, sir.
So it would be trailered in and out as you come and go each day?
Yes, sir.
And just thought, you'd set a three-man team or a three-person team down there, a two-seater side-by-side?
It'd be fine, yes, sir.
We could safely transport three people on a?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we, I've talked to our beach folks, and I think we could do that safely with no problems. Now, you know, we do have a jet ski that we have on the beach at the Coast Guard Massengill, and currently it does respond to incidents when, as needed, down at Gould's Inlet. And it's pretty quick, but, you know, I was asked, what do you, you know, what do you need? What could, what would be the comprehensive, robust kind of thing to have down there? And so that's why I.
With the swiftness of that water, I think, and immediate.
Yes, sir.
To be able to launch it and respond faster. The 800 megahertz radios are, they overcome the line-of-sight communication that you're having problems with the VHF radios. It won't take in the curvature and stay in line-of-sight.
That's correct.
All right. Is there any other questions from any other Commissioners?
I was just gonna ask about follow-up on the radios. So would it be faster to use a cellphone to call directly to 911?
They could, but these are waterproofed, and, I mean, we probably could. I would use a cellphone instead of that. But all the guards team and stuff are tuned in with the radios instead of cellphones, because they, you know, they have all the guard team with their, a personal cellphone. Most of the guards aren't gonna use their personal phones on the beach, so these are.
No, I'm just saying, I know, you know, seconds matter when you're trying to save someone. So I just, I was just trying to figure out till we can get something that, because there should be some kind of direct line to 911, then to have it relay to me.
Well, yes, sir, I see what you're saying. But, so the head guard is the one who relays it currently on the 800 system. And of course, there are often times when a call comes in to 911, and then they contact us on that radio as well, so. So it happens that way, as much as it happens probably the other way.
Lisa, are there any guard stands on the, I guess it'd be the, yeah, the south side or the west side of King and Prince, around there where the sharp curve is, where there's a lot of pedestrians, that, vacationers that go to the beach?
We guard, we're pretty much from Massengill Park to Coast Guard Park. So where those Johnson rocks are, that prevents us from going down any further towards the lighthouse. Is that what you're, where you're referring to?
I'm referring to that sharp curve that's right there on, where Beach View starts, Myrtle Beach, Myrtle Street.
Yes, sir, there, we do.
I think we called it Fat Lady Beach back in the day.
We keep eight stands out generally, is what we try to do. Some days we're, we may be six, and the shape of the beach is changing. And so this year, some of our heavier areas might not be the thicker area this year, but we try to keep eight stands up during peak season.
But there's no stands on the, on the south side of King and Prince, to the pier area?
No, sir, there's not, no, sir. Again, the Johnson Rock's pretty, at high tide, we can't get past them with our equipment, so we don't, we don't guard in that area of the beach.
I agree, okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, do we have a consensus that we want to move forward with this, or what's your next point? All right, consensus to move forward? All right, I think you have it.
Okay, and try to, and try to do this for summer 2021, is?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a big summer. Everybody's gonna come to the beach.
Thank you.
Well, item number four is to receive a presentation from Portum System LLC regarding its COVID-19 mobile tracking technology app. State your name for the record, please, sir.
Clement Cullens, and I am local counsel for Portum, which is a COVID-tracking app. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank y'all so much for letting us present to you today. I'm joined by Portum's Chief Strategy Officer and General Counsel, a man who wears multiple hats, Mr. Jay Thaw. He's gonna tell you a little bit more about the ins and outs of the app and what it does. But just a brief introduction to all of you. Portum is a technology company that has recently relocated to Glen County, so they are a local company now, and they have big aspirations in the COVID-tracking and reporting sphere. Obviously, that's a, that's a thing that didn't exist a year ago, and so they're right on the forefront. They've developed this technology and are having some very good success in implementing it. The purpose of us being here today, other than to introduce our new local company to the area, is that if it's the will of the Commission, we would love to have the county's support as we move forward. This COVID-tracking app is part of a public health app space, which, if it sounds like I don't know what I'm talking about, I don't. I'm not technologically inclined, I'll leave that to Mr. Thaw. But ultimately, the way that this works is that for any apps that have any sort of public. public health information associated with them, now Portum does not actually track any public health information or private health information. But if you're in this public health space, the apps cannot be placed onto Google or Apple's app stores without going through some procedural hoops and getting some government support, some recognition from local governments. And so I'll let Jay take it over and tell you a little bit more about the app and a little bit more about what it is that they are looking for and we would like to see. But we appreciate your time and I'll turn it over to Jay now.
Mr. Thaw. Thank you Clement, Jay Thaw, I am the Chief Strategy Officer and General Counsel for Portum Systems. What I, what I think I'd like to do first, if we can, Ms. Patel, I apologize, I didn't check to see if you could, if we had the volume to play the video. Would you? Okay. I'd, I'd love to just let you, you all watch the video first and then, then I'll sort of comment on it.
The COVID-19 pandemic has forever changed the world we live in. Normal is giving way to a next normal, where healthy security and management will become a regular part of all of our lives. That's why we at Invitem have created Portum, a new application that brings peace of mind. Portum is a safer harbor in turbulent times. It's simple, subtle, and secure, and runs on any smartphone with a data and Bluetooth connection. Portum tracks the movements of people in a specific safer harbor or zone who are using it voluntarily to enter that space. When you are in a safe harbor, Portum sits quietly on your smartphone, passively noting your location in a secure encrypted database in your phone's onboard memory. We call these location points breadcrumbs, and they're completely private, because to anyone but our app, they're total nonsense. The encrypted digital information stays in our system and can be used to determine potential exposure of any individual using Portum. The app continuously checks our central database for newly registered coronavirus cases. When one occurs, the application can compare the location data of thousands of people simultaneously to determine who may have been exposed and alert them through the application. The application can recommend and schedule a test and is also capable of confirming test results, keeping the entire network safer. All of this happens anonymously without anyone's identity being revealed to our system. Portum is a comprehensive digital health passport that provides a pathway to health, keeping track of isolation periods and workforce performance. Its advanced encryption technology ensures users' health data is private, secure, and anonymous. It's fully HIPAA compliant. Portum is much more than an application. It's a cloud-based enterprise digital health security solution that offers user-friendly health risk mitigation, empowering the duty of care that corporate and government agencies need in this pandemic and beyond into the next normal. Portum can be customized to suit any environment and features easy-to-use front and back-end interfaces. Software development kits allow integration of Portum's technologies into any app. The employer dashboard with predictive analytics helps to schedule workforces and can communicate in real time with wearable health tracking devices. Portum can also carry valuable health information, such as vaccination records, antibody status, blood type, and allergies. Portum reflects the core values and essential mission of Invitem. In the post-pandemic next normal, industry and commerce are bound to provide an increased standard of care to keep people safer. Portum is the tool that can make it all possible. Portum makes a new kind of social contract possible, where we all participate in keeping ourselves and the people around us safer. With guaranteed anonymous location exposure tracking, Portum tackles a virus as soon as it rears its ugly head. It's the smart solution to an unprecedented problem. Portum, peace of mind.
So that's the, the shiny overview version. And, and Mr. Cullens sort of got into what we, what, what we would like to, to forge headwood with, with the county, which is the support of the county in, in making the public-facing version of Portum available to everybody, specifically the citizens of Glen County. I think that's, it's an excellent tool to keep folks safer. But Apple and Google have come together to develop these protocols based on their own backend API ethical tracing software, which is sort of forcing us in no corner, despite the fact that we don't use their, their backend API. We use a, a, a non-data storing, very anonymous tracking method that, that collects no data. Be that as it may, they've sort of pigeonholed us into this, this COVID app space and have asked us to go out and seek the, the recommendation of municipalities and government. So I figured that as a local and a lifelong resident, this wasn't a bad county to choose. So I asked Mr. Cullens to sort of help us arrange this meeting and, and introduce the app to you. I've, I've got it on my phone, and I don't know how I can show it to you, but we can, I mean, the slide presentation is, is, is more of the same overview, and I brought that more for informational purposes to share with the county. It's not truly a presentation that we, I think, need to discuss in depth today. I think what, what I'd like for the commission to know is, is that the goal is, is to create a safer Glen County. We have, in fact, met with the EDC and Ryan Moore and the Economic Development Authority has seen the presentation, I believe also believes in the product, has issued a recommendation that I believe has been transmitted to the county. The app itself is free. It is a public-facing app. Anybody can use it. It is very useful for, for the public, and the more people that buy in and use it, the, the better the, the contact tracing gets. There is a paid-for backend of the app that, that we feel is very useful for businesses in managing their workforces during a, a pandemic, COVID pandemic, but, but any pandemic really. We geofence your location or any location along the route, and you are able to ask your employees to submit to either a testing or, or a symptom checker on a daily basis. The employer actually gets, can, can determine how specific that is or how strict they're, they're gonna be with it. It's voluntary for the employee, to the point the employee, employer says it is or isn't. That's, you know, we leave that in the hands of the employer. But once you, once, once that employee leaves the property, leaves the zone that we geofence and create, then they're anonymous again. There's no, there's no tracking outside the workplace, there's no privacy concerns. So that's, that's the, the general scheme of the, of the product. I'm happy to take any questions or, or comments.
Commissioners.
So how does this work again?
Well, I'm not the nerd. That's, that's part of the problem. No, so our, our, actually, we've sent our team of nerds to negotiate a DoD contract today. But the, the backend programmers, it's best that they can explain it to, to a dumb lawyer, have essentially said, we've developed these breadcrumbs that are non, they're not latitude, latitude longitude based, they're just, they're binary code based, and the, the system works off of proximity, Bluetooth cellular proximity rather than GPS. So it's, it's based on your spatial location with, with reference to another pinging device. So it's, for that reason, it's very secure, because it's not interpretable to anybody but our, our, our backend technology, the API.
I, I guess what I was trying to get to is to understand that you can pretty much determine the location of somebody.
Sure.
Who's in the system through the app. But how does it impact them, health-wise or anyone? So do they have to upload their information about that they've taken the vaccine or they've been tested positive for COVID?
That's correct, and it's, it's a secure upload. And in fact, we don't, the, the, the vaccine card, the pic, if you use a picture or a QR code, doesn't leave your phone, it stays on your phone, so that, you know, that, that sort of eliminates that privacy concern, concern in the transmission. It just goes out as, as a code. But yes, you're, if you open the app, and we may be able to scroll to just a picture of the app, go a couple of slides down, see there's sort of a better way to point it out. Nope, okay, didn't put that one in there. If you open the dashboard, there's, there's sort of a days of the week calendar, and then there's a symptom checker button that goes through the CDC, we use the CDC guidelines for recommended symptom checking. It's got a proximity beeper, so if you stay within six feet of somebody for more than 15 minutes, it'll let you know. It has a, a, a vaccine card upload feature and a test result upload feature. We're currently in negotiation with two lab companies to, to create sort of a, an automatic transfer of that information, so you wouldn't physically have to take a picture at all, it would just, it would just be sent via QR code as a, as a validated result. And then it will, you know, if, if you respond in the negative to, to, to something it considers a COVID risk factor, it won't issue what, what we create as a passport, a QR passport. So if, in other words, if, if a business wanted to use it to protect its customer base or employees, and, and that person wanted to go into the office or into the restaurant or whatever, you'd, you'd scan, and anybody, phones can, you know, your device can scan a, a passport, you wouldn't have to have a physical scanner. It would then not issue that QR, you wouldn't be able to pull it up at all. So you, if, if a, if a venue or an event required it for access, you, you'd be turned away at the door. Or if, as an employee, your, your employer could turn you away and say, no, you need to, you either need to get a test or you need to complete a symptom check.
What, what specifically are you asking us to do? I mean, I, I wanna, yeah, understand what specifically you're asking what?
We, we would like a, a resolution from the commission endorsing, probably wrong word, supporting the use of Portum for the citizens of their community. We'd like to put it on the county's website as a tool for, for you all. I mean, that's something we build in on our end for free. We'd, I mean, we'd like to make it available to the public. I think it's part of this, sort of a new social contract that I think continues down the road. And, and frankly, we don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the need for the county to support it beyond the COVID pandemic. I would, I, I think it's a limited duration. I mean, it's a useful tool moving forward, but it's not something we're gonna perpetually need the support of a government for, but we'd like it now.
Ryan Moore, I know you've worked with them. Is, is there the advantage to the community for us to do this? Is there, are they, I know there was some discussion about them moving offices down here. Where does all that stand? Go ahead.
Sure. Ryan Moore with the Development Authority. Give your name for the record, please.
Ryan Moore with the Development Authority. Commissioner Quinn has understand that the company has already taken up residence in Glen County. Depending on the trajectory and how, how well things go, they will, they will grow here. We're working with them now to, to figure out their space constraints and how many employees they may have. But certainly, they are committed to the area, and I'll let them comment on this as well. But we would love to see this type of technology in our community. We think we, we support entrepreneurs really well. This is a great place to work from, especially when you have a very mobile workforce that can work anywhere. We'd love to see the growth of this type of company in Glen County. And I'll let them comment specifically on their growth lens.
Sure, sure. And, and I didn't mention this at first because it's not, I don't think it's relevant to today's discussion necessarily of Portum specifically, but there is a, there's an umbrella company that is also in the process of being moved to Glen County that's, it's, it's a tech incubator based on the same backend API. So we're, we're, we've got, you know, currently there are four projects spinning off of the same backend tech that we'll release sort of as, as we move forward. This was a, I hate to describe COVID as a fortuitous opportunity, but it really, it was, it was a good opportunity to showcase the, the power of the, the technology we built. This is a, I, I think it's worth noting that our chief technology officer is, his name is Luke McNeese, he's Australian. Everybody seems to be Australian in this group, but he, he's Australian, he built Priceline.com. And then if you, if, I don't know what hotels that you, you gentlemen enjoy staying at, but his, he built the Marriott app, so that the, the point system, the check-in system, the keyless system are all his. In fact, if you go look at his Bonvoy app, the, the line where your points are just keeps going. It doesn't stop. So it's, it, you know, this isn't a, a, sort of a fly-by-night spark idea. We've, we've built a, a, a big tech solution in the background that we can, we can continue to push products out of, and, and we'd like to do that from Glen County.
Has, has there been any discussion with the county attorney about this? And, and-
I'll let Mr. Cullens speak.
Mr. Mr. Mumford, could you speak to that too?
Certainly, Commissioners. We have, with Mr. Cullens and I, I've spoken about this. He sent me some, a resolution that we would probably want to mock up a little bit more, but we do have a draft from them. If it was the board's wishes to adopt something, we can certainly have something ready for y'all to consider.
What about jobs? Back to you, sir.
Sure. Early on, so, you know, it's, it's a mobile tech-based company. So early on, jobs are probably relatively small before we, we, before we have a lot of business onboarding. We, we currently have four logistics companies. We're in, we're, we're working on, in some federal space right now. But in the, probably in the six-month run, we're talking five to 10 employees. But beyond that, when we onboard significant, significant, significantly bigger companies and, and that number grows, we anticipate basing our call center, for lack of a better word here, our, our tech support in Glen County, and that could, I mean, you know, with Portum, that's probably 25 employees down the road. If you look at it, beat them on the whole, and that continues to spin up like we, we feel that it will, that, that number can grow exponentially.
I personally like the idea that a tech company would be interested in coming to Glen County. It could open the door for other tech companies who want to come here and, and be introducing. Frankly, Glen County could be known as one of the tech counties in the state of Georgia that are introducing tech companies to the, to the world.
We, we think that's true.
And there's no obligation as far as Glen County is concerned.
Correct, no, absolutely. I mean, other, other than we'd, we'd like your support, there is no financial, financial outlay at all, there's no ask for you to use the tech. We'd be happy to provide it to the county on sort of a gratis basis for, for a period of time if you wanted to try it with your, your own employees. But I mean, by no means do we need to do that. We're, you know, we give it to you if you wanted it, I think is the answer to that. The, and, and to, back to the, to your point about tech industry in Glen County, along with, with us, but comes the, sort of the backend ancillary tech services, cybersecurity, cyber risk, those sort of things. And if, and if, if you build a big enough product in town, those, those services will also come. Our CEO is moving to Glen County. It's a great place to live for tech folks, that, you know, it's, it's convenient to two airports and three airports. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of attractive features of Glen County for sure.
Commissioners, I, I think that most of us have seen this presentation over the last month, perhaps. Do I have a consensus as to whether we would be willing to support a resolution? I, I see a lot of heads nodding, so we'll, we'll work toward, uh, working that resolution, Mr. Attorney, to make sure that it's in verbiage that, that we're comfortable with.
Sure. And we're happy to assist in any way possible, Mr. Mumford. We're, you know, welcome to any changes you want to make.
All right, and thank y'all very much.
Commissioners, thanks so much as well. We, we appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Item number five on our agenda this afternoon is to receive an update on the Canal Road Widening Project, and I believe Mr. Andrews says that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Paul Andrews, County Engineer, which I have for you is, is a option for our Canal Road Widening Project. This is the project that, SPOS project, we've been working on to widen Canal Road from the end of the five-lane section currently towards the Spur all the way out to Glencoe Parkway. You recently, I brought an item about the intersection improvement up at the Spur and Glencoe, check that, but Glencoe and Canal. This is the widening portion in between the five-lane section down by the Spur and that intersection. It has been designed for the bulk of the project. The, the large stretch of the project was originally concepted and designed past where the Canal Road self-storage site is, to move to a more rural section of a four-lane divided road with a raised grass median to look towards when Glencoe Parkway, when Harry Diggers goes to a divided four-lane, that was the, the, had been the vision of those road sections. And so what we did was, we had put the, that design in place from where the, where the Canal Road self-storage is, all the way out to the Glencoe intersection. This is an alternative to Car- This is an alternative to carry that five-lane center turn lane section all the way through from now, essentially from the spur all the way out to the intersection at Glencoe Parkway. That would do would be eliminate median breaks that the raised median section has, and provide that continuous center turn access to all the properties along that road. This is the raised median plans that EMC has worked up, and these are near completion. And so this change to the, to remove the raised medians and put in a center turn lane would be a revision to the plans. That, of course, comes with a work scope change. And these are the current plans where the median breaks are. You can see it picking up there. Right in the center of the top road section is the, that's the big drainage ditch that Georgia DOT put in. Just to the right is where the Canal Road self-storage driveway is. And that's the start of the raised median. To the left runs all the way back to, towards the spur. All that had originally been concepted and designed to have the five-lane center turn section because of all the driveways and road intersections that were there.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
We were in a meeting with Pam Thompson, and you weren't at that meeting, but I thought that we had discussed that there was going to be no raised mediums at all on that section of road.
This is the current plans that we had, that we have been working towards and prepared. Can you go back up? We went past the, this is the concept plan that we're presenting today to say, let's remove all that raised median and carry the five-lane section all the way from where it ends now by Cheddar's, all the way out to Glencoe. On the plan view, it's still four lanes, two lanes in each direction. We just removed that raised median. The slides that were passed that are the current design in case y'all had questions about where we currently were. But this is the, this is what staff was asked to bring forward to y'all, was an option to remove that raised median and put in a center turn lane all the way through.
Why was the raised median put in? I mean, if we're five-lane that far?
What we did was transition to the concept for as Glencoe Parkway goes to four-lane, divided four lanes, and Harry Digger's is, those would be a divided four-lane, is how that's been concepted from when it was, when the right-of-way was acquired, and we've been working towards that. The plan with this was to transition as soon as we could into that more rural section, but carry that five-lane far enough to respect all the driveways from Glass Circle and the existing residents there. But there's been questions about providing that access as we, as those properties along Canal Road transition from vacant to having something on them. Do we want to, with this, provide that access?
They could be commercial.
I would expect they would be, yes, sir.
Let me ask you this question. Closer down to the roundabout?
Yes, sir.
Where the little strip center is on Canal Road?
Yes, sir.
There now. Now, will that be raised right where the dark areas, if you bring your arrow up, you're right in there, will that be raised?
It will. As we get into the, that comes into the design section for that roundabout.
Okay.
And for the roundabouts is, what they are is, it's not, it's a rate, it looks the same. It's channelizing traffic in preparation for the roundabout. So that's a raised center.
So that's the only section of that that will be raised?
Yes, sir. As we get, all the lakes on the roundabout will have that same channelization.
I'm talking about on the Canal Road, so that's the only section that will be raised. I see Pam shaking her head.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And have we acquired all the right-of-way now on Canal?
We have not. We are in negotiations.
That's been ongoing for some time.
And they are pushing hard to get it. But we have, I believe we've turned one, one of the property owners' four parcels over for closing, and they're getting close on others.
How many parcels remain that we do not have right-of-way?
I think for the widening section, I think we have five more left.
And timeline?
They are closer now than they were. They're hoping in, I'm guessing, the next couple of weeks to have more of them closed out, or at least get to closing and get offers.
Pam, Ms. Thompson's coming forward.
Yes, sir. Chairman Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. You have an item, you all have an item on your Thursday night agenda with a letter about the raised median option on Canal Road, and that's not going to be an option for y'all for the foreseeable future. A lot of the people considering donating or selling their right-of-way to us were concerned about that question. So assuming that that is approved by this board on Thursday evening, that will actually trigger the closing of several pieces of property at once.
That's a good answer.
Thank you.
Any questions, any further comments on Canal Road widening? Being none. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Okay. The next step would be, y'all are going to see to the board a request to authorize the change order for the engineers to start work on this.
All right.
Yes, sir.
And that will be on Thursday night's agenda? Or you need a recommendation today to do that?
No, sir. I don't believe y'all can, I was going to put it on the next finance committee agenda, see if I can get it on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item number six is receiving update on Splosh 2016 projects. Mr. Austin, Ms. Thompson.
Good afternoon, commissioners. That's, first one is a road project, that's the El Mig. It starts on the 22nd of, notice to proceed 22nd March.
Yes, sir. This is the one where we are currently getting the right-of-way on the area that's closer to the roundabout. We're getting our environmental clearance, and we are bringing you forward the change order that county engineer Andrews just discussed. This is the one that you gave consensus for us to get with DOT and agree to the design change. We are working with Robert McCall from DOT to schedule that meeting.
And we've not gotten any feedback from them on that yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Pennac Road bid opens on Thursday, and I bring that, I will bring that to finance with the options. Sea Island Road, that opened last week, and that'll be on finance committee next week. Kingsway Federica Road, they've, you may have noticed, they've resurfaced the retreat side. We've moved the four-way stop sign down there, and they'll start some night construction tonight, get back on a night schedule. Spur 25 in Altama, we're down to six properties. We're looking at, we got, of the six, we think four are going to be easier to get, and we've got two long poles in the tent, that being Walmart and Home Depot. Walmart's easement, I think we can work through. Home Depot, I've asked for some names at the regional and national level so that you guys can put your fingerprint on it. Home Depot is notorious for apparently taking a long time, six to eight months just to even answer your note.
Harry Digger's North, we did put that out for bid. You all approved the contract on March 4th, and we are working to issue the notice to proceed now. That project, once it begins, is expected to take 120 days. We did meet with DOT in February, and the funding for the south portion of the project is being released this spring, so we are waiting for that release, and then we will issue the RFP on that portion.
I did want to mention one thing on Altama, that Mr. Deloche is working a packet to put out the bid. We hope to do that concurrently with getting the last answer from Home Depot. We would like to get that started, that project started this summer and finished before the holiday season, being as it's right there in the mix of everything. Federica Sidewalk, that bid opened. We are currently reviewing the low bid with the contractor. When I say we, Mr. Deloche and the purchasing officer are doing that right now, and we will have a recommendation for the finance committee next week.
These plans have been designed by Pittman Engineering. There are, there is a short term, a phase-one portion of this project, and a phase-two. The phase-one will be coming forward to you in about two months for RFP and award of Fletzy has commented, and Glen County is currently addressing some additional comments we received from them. This is hopefully the last round of comments. Once they review those, then we should be able to move forward. Did I misspeak on the other? Can you go two back, Matthew? I thought that was, I'm sorry. I misspoke. College Park is on hold pending the award of the CDBG MIT grant, which are funds from Hurricane Irma. So we submitted this one February 10th for funding for all four phases of construction. I apologize.
When do we expect to hear back on that grant, if we got it or not?
I think it's mid-June. It's June. Okay, so Golden Parkway is the one that Pittman Engineering has designed phase-one, and we are working to get that ready for a bid and out on the street. Hornet was, has been combined with South Palm. We are working with Mr. Mott. He's given us a counter offer on the easement area we need from his property. And then we are getting the easement from the curb store owner right there executed also. Once those two are finalized, we'll be able to put that bid out.
Roof was put on last week. The windows are in, and they're getting ready to hang some drywall. On the admin building, they'll start the roofing on the two kennel areas. The trusses are up. Sure.
I was just saying, projected finish date, are you saying?
We're still looking at June, the July move-in.
Okay. This spreadsheet, I know, is a little smaller. These are some of the projects from Splosh four and five that aren't covered in the other category. We've, the Oglethorpe Convention Center is on the ballot today. South Palm and Hornet, we've covered. Oak Grove Causeway Pipe Rehab, you all approved that at your March 4th Board of Commissioners meeting. We're working on the notice to proceed now. We are working to make sure we coordinate utilities and the road with that project. We've summarized the Harry Digger Sidewalk, the Canal Road widening, the Canal Glencoe Roundabout. The One Georgia grant is down there in gray. It is functionally complete, and that grant money has been spent. And Summersby Point is functionally complete. There's going to be some fine grading and some grass stabilization. So since last month, we have completed two of these projects. And Matthew, on my list, I've covered all of that first page already. All of mine have already been covered in Splosh, so I think between those spreadsheets, we wanted font we could all read, and a clear summary of what we've done in the last month. So unless you all have any questions, we've covered all of our projects.
You know, when you look at that list, it looks almost incomprehensible, and we appreciate y'all getting that done in your spare time when you're not on your day job.
And we do appreciate the updates. I know it takes a bit of work to bring it, but I do think the community appreciates seeing the progress that we're making. And I do, again, also thank you for your efforts. Commissioners, any one else have comments on this? Thank you. Thank you again. Item number seven is discussion regarding the Island Planning Commission public comment
I'm Joel Willis, currently the chairman of the Island Planning Commission. Thank you for commissioners. You know, what we're dealing with is site plan review and village preservation. And basically, a site plan review is looking at the technical aspects of the project, where the structure is going to sit on the property, how the parking is developed, entryway in and out of it, where the trash container might be on the property, water and sewer, of course, and that sort of thing. And it's really, what we're looking for is for the public to give us constructive questions and comments about that particular project, not where they come and they say, I don't like this project, I don't want it. The site plan is, basically, it wouldn't come to us if it was not complicit with ordinance of this particular project, of a commercial property. If it's zone commercial, highway commercial, wherever that is, and is deemed compliant with ordinance, then we look at how it will work on that particular property. What's happened is that it's become basically a for and against on a particular project. And we just want questions from the public that could help us better understand and maybe point out something that might need to be changed on that particular project. On village preservation, it's basically dealing with signs in the village, and also colors of houses and commercial buildings, and colors of roofs, and any additions to any residential property in that area. And, but this does not affect anything to do with a public hearing. Zoning changes, conditional use, special use, trying to think what else, ordinance changes. This does not affect that at all. It's just site plan, review, and for village preservation. And I'll let Mr. Ursery, who is our vice chair, make any comments.
Thank you, commissioners. I think the only thing I want to add is...
Mr. Ursery, if you would, give your name for the record, please.
Yes, Robert Ursery. I'm the vice chair of the Island Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the most important thing here, for me anyway, is that we take it away from the for and against format, and have it more of a question and comment format instead of a for and against. Right now, our bylaws ask that we have 30 minutes for and 30 minutes against. Well, and the practicality of all of that is, we very seldom have anyone there for the particular item that we're looking at, especially for site plans. It's understood that for site plans, the use is already approved. And that was why, I think, we were looking at a shortened period of time. Typically, for those that are against, we allow 30 minutes. And I think what we'll see is, again, the same sort of people that have issues will show up, and we'll allow them, again, the same 30 minutes. The issue about the three minutes versus five minutes, I think that was simply a case where we were hoping to have more people be able to speak. If they're speaking about, or if they're asking a question, it shouldn't take more than three minutes to ask a question. Or a comment about one of the aspects of the project, be it the height, the number of parking spaces, the drainage, it shouldn't take that long to make those comments. Again, we would, the chair would have the option to allow people to take longer if he saw fit. And we're here, Joel and I, here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, anyone want to lead off with questions?
Mr. Chairman, the Island Planning Commission was created to provide to this commission a filter for our island community, just like we have the mainland planning commission. One of the things that, coming back on the commission, as I witnessed the site plan discussion at Hampton Point, a property that was rezoned in 1989, where the purpose of that meeting was to try to define some of the aspects that are talking about with a site plan. It helped me to realize that our citizens didn't understand that process, and that's sometimes normal. So this was asked if they could clear up some of these issues. We'll have some other things coming back about it, but this was one of their recommendations, and that was a unanimous...
and that was a unanimous recommendation to this body to make this change and at least re, help everyone refocus. So that's, that's the normal process. I think it's up to the commission here to decide what you want to do. Being back in politics, I realize that the scream is, well, you're taking away my right to weigh in on a project, and whether they realize whether it's a site plan or a village preservation issue or not. But it's a recommendation, and it's brought to us with a six oh vote, and if we want to approve it, we can do that, or if you want to just keep things the way they are, we can.
I think the, for me, the, the point that was made just a few moments ago about that you very rarely have these comments, and there are occasions when you do have it. For me personally, I wouldn't want to make the change to change the format. I think it's important that the opportunity is given to let people have the discussion. I know it's an inconvenience on the Island Planning Commission, but it's an important, in my opinion, an important aspect of what happens in our community, to let people ask questions, bring about their concerns, and air them, so that, so that there's better understanding of what exactly is going on. So I may be in the minority on this, but I, I don't see any reason to change what we currently have.
Your counterpart agrees.
Commissioner, commissioners, I disagree. I think majority of the general public, as evidenced by the fact that we have a room full of people here, don't particularly care about going to a two hour, two and a half hour meeting. I think they tend to try to stay away from them. I think what we're doing here is opening up opportunity for the public to speak. We're going from potentially six people to 10, and again, addressing issues that can certainly be addressed in three minutes, and if they are pertinent, the chair has the ability to, to lengthen the time that they can speak. But I think generally, people want their county business done efficiently. They're not really interested in the, a lot of, maybe the blubbiating that goes on, and, and they want to get in and they want to get out, and then they just basically want their questions answered. And again, I, I've been doing this a long time before I got to the county commission. I don't ever remember anybody on the planning commission, particularly on the mainland planning commission, ever getting up and applaud staff for the great job that they've done putting together a site plan. Most of it has been, you know, the questioning, the other side of the issue. And so I, I think we're giving people plenty of time, and certainly more people to be involved and get it done more efficiently, and I think that's what the, I think that's what the public's looking for. So I, I support the change.
And I'd, I'd like to ask a question. Mr. Willis, is, is there an opportunity, when it comes to site plans, for the public to speak for and against? I, I get your point of this, this is, we're approving the site plan that's already gone through staff, so when, when is the period for the public to, to voice an opinion on, "I like it" or "I don't like it"?
Well, that's, you know, it's a rezoning if it's, when they do that, they can have that comment period. But the question, what we're looking for is constructive questions from the public about a particular site plan. What we get from the public, and I, you know, I'm not criticizing this, if they come out and, especially with the Hampton Market, in droves, basically saying, "We don't want this particular project at our entrance to our neighborhood." Well, that, that project, that, that particular land was rezoned before any house was built in Hampton Point in 1989, so, but we're, we're hearing why we don't want it, but it really has no bearing on that particular site plan. Because we have a, we have a job to do, you know, we have, we're final say on site plans. There's no appeal process on that, which I think is not a good idea, but we want the public to come and tell us, or ask us a question, because when they do speak, it currently means we don't respond to them, because they're not asking questions, they're just making statements. So we just listen to them, and then we hear the next speaker, and then the next speaker, and the next speaker, and then we go on. So in this process, they get asked a question, we, staff will be taking those questions down, then we'll have the applicant come up and answer those questions, or the staff will answer those questions to the best of their ability, which will, I think, give more information about the particular project.
Joel, I, I was at that meeting, and the gas pumps, at the same, same night. I agree that if it's an approved use, and most of the time, you know, I'm not sure those people knew that this isn't a place you can complain about something that, that's an approved use. I think if, if, if they know, you know, you've got the complaint that, that just complained, and then you've got the ones, they're, they really make good points, and I'd hate to take the good points away from those people. But I understand, I understand, I was there that night. That, that was a long, hard one.
That was, you know, that was a zoning, that was a special use or conditional use at the-
Yeah, the other-
That was a public hearing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, different, that's a different issue at all.
The Hampton was right after that.
The Hampton was a, was a site plan review.
And I really don't think those people understood that it didn't matter what they said, what they had to say, that was, that was an approved use.
Right, right. I don't think they understood that.
Yeah, because most of them, a lot of people had contacted me earlier in the day, and I told them, I said, "Look, it's an approved use." I said, "And, and, well, we're going to go complain anyway." I said, "It's not going to do any good." So I, I, I don't think we should take all the time away. I, I really think, you know, if, if you start saying, "Public, you can't speak," then it's going to look like, "Well, we don't have a voice anymore."
Well, I hear you.
I, I don't, I don't want to take it, you know, it doesn't need to ramble on like that did.
The Hampton Market, I think we, we let more people speak further than the 30 minutes. I allowed that to happen, because I knew there were people who wanted to voice their opinion. It's not like we cut it off at 30 minutes and say it's done.
No, no.
We, we try to give the public the full time.
I think it's important to, to point out that all of you are volunteers. You, you agreed to, to serve on that committee, but I'd like to break protocol just a little bit. Mr. Bork, I'd like to allow you a minute, or, or two, to make a comment here since we're, we're two, but to weigh in on this and-
Appreciate your indulgence. Mr. Chairman, Hugh Bork, resident of St. Simons Island. I agree with the premise that we've got two processes, one for site plans and one for zoning changes and whatever. I won't get into details, I think everybody understands that. So for that premise is fine, but there's a couple of key points. Number one, this came before the Island Planning Commission voted unanimously, no discussion out in the public and whatever which impacted the public. It showed up on the Board of Commissioners meeting agenda as a consent item. Perception in the public, we're going to jam it through to hell with what the public thinks. That's perception, gentlemen. So that's you guys and you folks, okay, communicating with the public in what I consider to be pretty ineffective, and if you will, I'll use my words, a bullying piece, okay? That's part, part of my objection on this particular item. The chairman has the wherewithal to disallow conversation that's not to the point, under the current language. That's my interpretation. I've read it several times, saying, "Hey, if I was sitting in Mr. Willis's chair, would I allow that to continue?" And it can be done respectfully, I got that, okay? And to keep it on subject. But in that meeting, if it's a point, I believe this recommendation is a knee jerk reaction to the events of that particular night, although it may have been building over time, I got that, okay? But the fact that we went from a zoning discussion or a CUP, which in my mind is, is a zoning issue, okay, in general terms, to a site plan, which is different ground rules, it was not explained in that meeting, and I appreciate the indulgence given where we were, but you set the stage with, with the, with the zoning issue, where there was a lot of pro and con, and it was a pretty spirited exchange. But nothing said, "Hey, ground rules have changed, and here we go somewhere else," okay? I.e., under the site plan. I believe the way it's written right now, with the chairman exercising his privilege, and I agree, he's given some indulgence in a number of cases, me personally, but other people where he's allowed it, but if you cut it off, it puts him in control and basically will deal with it. And I'm going to tell you, gentlemen, a lot of the things, whether it's a zoning issue or a site plan issue, the amount of time I personally spend, and I'm not on anybody's payroll, you're talking about volunteer, all right, to get out, walk the sites and look and whatever, trying to improve the product. Is the applicant required to deal with some of this stuff? Not by the ordinance, but if you voice some opinions and some inputs into them, Roberts, Jonathan Roberts and his, his company, as a company, but they represent multiple applicants, have been very receptive to constructive input coming out of the comment section. And that ain't going to happen in three minutes, and I'm pushed to do it in five minutes in some cases. Is it abused by some people in the public? Absolutely, okay? But I believe that's the chair's piece to deal with.
And I think one of the things that we're dealing with here, one of the fallout things is the civility that leaves the discussion table, and, and I think that's one of the things that we're trying to, to get back under some control. To be able to state an opinion is certainly one thing, to do it disrespectfully is another, and-
Like, I, I understand that, but to me, in my opinion, having run a number of meetings in this controversial environments in my professional life, it's the chair's responsibility to keep that under control. Now, it may, excuse my language, piss off the speaker, but if that's under the guidance and under the ordinance, okay, in case of site plans, then it's certainly within his purview, but a preamble to say that's okay is fine. My biggest beef on this is the way it was put through, it looked like it would be jammed through with no input, no discussion, so I appreciate the indulgence of the board to, to entertain this discussion. But the second piece of cutting the amount of time, okay, it's not practical to deal with that. I've made, I don't know, three or four dozen pitches, either to you guys or to the IPC, all right, and very rarely am I able to get all of the points across, whether you guys agree with it or not, I think they're valid points to be made, that's a personal opinion, granted, all right? But I believe it's incumbent on you as a, as a public entity, and the Island Planning Commission, okay, to be able to listen to the public even to the extent of some indulgence, and that's where the, where the chairman needs to have the indulgence. But if you give him three minutes, the probability of extending that is less than if you give him five minutes and extend in five or cutting it short. So I would ask your indulgence to say, "Hey, leave it as it is, it can be managed that way," all right? But the way it was presented to the public and the way it came down, guys, this was cramming one more down our throat, and that was part of the reason I spoke in the public comment section of the Board of Commissioners at the last meeting when you pulled it off the agenda. You need to be listening to us, gentlemen, and I appreciate you all.
I think, Mr. Bork, this is evidence that we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a move to reject the recommendation of the Island Planning
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple of comments first?
Yes, sir, please do.
One, at the beginning of our meeting, I go over the meeting procedures, which details the public comment period and the public hearing period and what is allowed. So we do that every meeting. We're willing to give up the time constraint on this, and say an hour for anybody who has questions or comments. What we don't want is this come in here and say, "And I'm against this," even though it's a permitted use, and that's what we're trying to do, is to get more, you know, we want the involvement of the public, and they could point out something that maybe the staff or the IPC is over, is not seeing, and make diff, we've made changes to site plans during the course of a meeting, and ask the applicant to go back and redo it. So, but we're, we're willing to give up the time constraints if that, you know, can satisfy you. You're the ones that have to make this determination, so as I said, you know, our, our commission voted this unanimously, so it's, it's up to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Willis, I guess for me, how, how would you, if, let's say we make the change, right, and you, you wanted technical advice, how do you stop somebody saying, "I'm against this"? They're giving you technical advice.
You're right. I mean, that's, that's, you know, part of our procedures is to stop somebody from a personal attack, and that happens quite often if you've been to any of our meetings, and we tried to tamp that down. I've not had anybody removed from a meeting, my previous chairman did, because somebody didn't listen. And, you know, we want to be, have a civil meeting, we, we're very respectful to the public, we want that be returned to us, and I know y'all wish the same thing, but if somebody wants to say something, they're going to say it, you know, I can't.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I guess that's for me-
But we're just trying to-
And I completely understand what you're trying to do.
Well, you know, in a civil society, people will adhere to the rules.
Yeah.
That's not true anymore in the days' world, we all know that, and we're just trying to get something that can be constructive at our meetings instead of basically destructive.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all's input on this.
Mr. Attorney? Allowed to make that motion?
Commissioners, typically you don't vote at work sessions. If you would like to vote on this item, you'd need to add it as a voting item, but otherwise, typically you would kick it to your Thursday night meeting.
I mean, I think we're ready to do something, so I need to make a motion to have it as a voted item.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll, I'll do so on that effect.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig to add item seven as a voting item to our agenda today. Do I have a second? Second. Okay, all in favor of adding this as a voting item? We're not voting on the item, we're simply adding, adding it to our agenda today. All in favor of making item seven a voting item? Raise your right hand, please. That looks like six, four, and against, one against.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reject the recommendation of the Island Planning Commission. I appreciate what y'all have tried to do. I think the public perception is not going to understand what's being attempted here, so we'll move on to bigger and better things.
Okay, we, we have a motion to reject the policy change to the Island Planning Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion to reject the Island's planning, any other discussion. I would like to say before we vote that I would, I appreciate very much what you're doing. I would appreciate if you could bring back to us an altered motion that could help us set protocol and procedure for the Island Planning Commission when it comes to site plan and village preservation, so that we could, if we're taking the time constraints off of this and it gets down to, I agree with you on your, on your precept that, that site plans aren't open for discussion as to for or against, it's, it's simply to make changes. So if we could maybe fine tune that, but is there any other, is there any other comment before we vote?
Let me just say, I totally agree with Mr. Bork on the way this thing was handled. It was, never should have been put on a consent agenda, but again, I'm not being critical of anybody that did, but it just happened, and it was not meant to ram anything down anybody's throat. It would just seem like a pretty good idea to me, and, and efficiently running the people's business. But I, Mr. Bork, I, I agree with you, it probably wasn't, you know, best effort to, to put it on consent agenda, and, and we pulled it off, and I, I don't think it was at your urging, I think we're going to do it anyway. And, so, anyway, just have that, let's vote.
All right. As it's worded, all that's in favor of rejecting the Island Planning Commission public comment period policy, please raise your right hand. I'm counting five, those opposed, two, so that does carry. Gentlemen, is there anything else for the, and are there any items to come up for executive session today? Being none, this meeting will stand adjourned.